Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for August 22, 2022. It's approximately 6:07 PM and we will start this meeting to order. Welcome to the regular Planning Board meeting for the Planning Board of Monday, August 22, 2022. To help slow the spread of COVID-19, City Council adopted an emergency proclamation on Tuesday, July 19th, requiring face coverings to be worn while in attendance at all city of Burbank public meetings, including but not limited to meetings of the City Council and its boards and commissions. We will anticipate all members of the Planning Board and attendees at the -- we'd appreciate, sorry, all members wearing face coverings during the meeting. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the Planning Board with oral communications on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the public comment period. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff. If you would like to participate in public comment period by telephone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Tonight's invocation will be given by Board Member Monaco and I will lead us in our flag salute. If you'd all please rise.
Fear, ignorance, and anger seem to have been running amok in this country. We on this board are committed to providing and keeping this ugliness as far away as we can from our great city. We will do the best we can and work hard to do the best we can for the best interest of Burbank. Thank you.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have the roll call, please?
Board Member Elric.
Here.
Board Member Monaco.
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzotti.
I am here. Do you have any announcements?
We don't have any announcements.
Okay. There are two public hearings tonight on the agenda. Item number one, now is the time and place for the hearing to receive public comment for the recirculated draft environmental impact report for the proposed 2021 and 2020 through 2029 housing element, safety element, and environmental justice general plan updates. The public hearing is to be held during the 47-day review period that started on July 22, 2022, and will end on September 6, 2022. No decision will be made by the Planning Board regarding this item. Only public comments will be received. Before we begin, do any Planning Board members have any legal, financial, or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Yes, we've received written communications. I believe those have all been forwarded to the board members.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Thank you, Vice Chair Rizzotti. May I have the presentation, please? Thank you.
Shipra, check the mic.
Good evening, Vice Chair Rizzotti and members of the board. My name is Shipra Rajesh, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. During tonight's presentation, staff will provide a brief overview of the housing and safety element update and a summary of the revised draft EIR sections, as well as draft EIR findings, and receive public comments on the revised sections of the draft EIR. Planning Board will not be deliberating or making a decision on the project at this time, and the discussion is limited to receiving public comments on the revised sections of the draft EIR. Burbank 2035 General Plan was adopted in 2013. It is a state-required policy document that provides guidance in shaping the future physical growth and development of the city. Burbank 2035 General Plan is made up of chapters or elements, many of which are required by state law. The housing element in particular is required to be updated on a fixed schedule, which is every eight years. The city's existing housing element extended from 2014 through October 2021. In addition to the proposed update to the housing element, state law requires updates to the general plan's safety element to address climate adaptation planning, as well as updates to environmental justice as it may apply to the city, either through a separate environmental justice element or by incorporating related goals, policies, and objectives into existing general plan elements. Currently, the city is in the process of updating Burbank 2035 General Plan Housing Element, Safety Element, and Environmental Justice for the 2021-2029 planning period. In 2017, Council approved the Affordable Housing Analysis and Strategy, which highlighted patterns of rapid employment growth and the rising cost of housing in Burbank. The combined factors of employment growth and the limited new housing production contributed to a widening gap between jobs and housing. Recognizing the need for affordable housing, in 2019, the City Council established a goal to facilitate building of 12,000 new units by 2035. Both the city's housing strategy and housing production goals will be integrated within the 2021-2029 housing element, also referred to as the Sixth Cycle Housing Element, through its identification of sites for future development and the identification of programs to facilitate development and address Burbank's wide-ranging housing needs. The housing element will lay the foundation for achievement of the city's goal to produce 12,000 new units, as well as address the city's fair share needs as defined by the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA. The housing element is made up of six major components. These include review of effectiveness of existing housing element, assessment of existing and projected housing needs, identification of financial, land, and administrative resources, evaluation of constraints to the development of housing, and housing plan, which provides programs for implementation of the goals enlisted in the housing element. Finally, affirmatively furthering fair housing is the last component, which includes analysis of impediments to housing, as well as programs to mitigate those impediments. The table on this slide indicates Burbank's RENA allocation for 2021-2029 planning period, which is the Sixth RENA Cycle. The RENA allocation for the city for the Sixth Cycle is 8,772 units, distributed among four income categories. The city is not responsible for producing these units per se, but the city is responsible for creating a regulatory framework inclusive of goals, policies, and programs that facilitates the development of these new dwelling units through both public and private efforts during the 2021-29 planning period. Additionally, pursuant to state HCD requirements, the city must plan for a sufficient buffer of new housing units beyond the required RENA number, which is at 14% or 1,239 additional dwelling units for the city. The buffer is intended to offset the unfulfilled development of projected dwelling units on the opportunity sites noted in the housing element update. Inclusive of the buffer and the required RENA allocation, the city has undertaken a planning and environmental assessment process that accounts for a total of 10,011 dwelling units. The EIR analysis is based on total site capacity of 10,456 units, which provides a conservative analysis for the 2029 interpolated housing growth assumed under the downtown transit-oriented development specific plan and the Golden State specific plan along with the city's RENA allocation. This slide shows the distribution of housing opportunity sites within the city. The Sixth Cycle Housing Element identifies 19 opportunity sites to accommodate the projected growth in housing needed to meet the city's RENA allocation for the 2021-29 planning period. Twelve of the opportunity sites are in the downtown specific plan area, and seven opportunity sites are located in the Golden State specific plan area, as shown on the slide. The proposed update of the city's housing and safety element, as well as the incorporation of environmental justice policies within the general plan, is deemed as a project that is subject to CEQA. To fulfill the review requirements of CEQA, the city prepared a program environmental impact report pursuant to Section 15168 of CEQA Guidelines. The draft EIR was released for a 65-day public review period on January 26, 2022. City received comments and revised the Biological Resources Section and Utilities Systems Section of the draft EIR to address some of the comments. Revised portion of the draft EIR has been circulated for a 47-day public period, public review period, on July 22, 2022, to provide an opportunity to the public to comment on the new information contained in the recirculated draft EIR. The draft EIR identifies significant and unavoidable environmental impacts for transportation and utilities. Please note that the recirculated draft EIR does not make any changes to the project's significant and unavoidable impacts that were identified in the draft EIR. I will now turn over the presentation to Suzanne Uwerta from Rincon to give the board and the public an overview of the CEQA process for the project, including revised draft EIR sections.
Thank you, Shipra. Good evening. As Shipra said, my name is Suzanne Uwerta. I'm with Rincon Consultants, and I am the Project Manager for the preparation of the EIR. I will provide an overview of the EIR process and a summary of the impact analysis that we prepared for the draft EIR and the recirculated draft EIR. The California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, establishes the EIR process. The three main purposes for CEQA are to, one, disclose the significant environmental effects of a project to the public and the agency's decision-makers; to identify ways to support, to avoid or reduce potential environmental impacts through mitigation measures or alternatives; and also to enhance public participation in the planning and environmental review process. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to present the findings of the draft EIR and recirculated draft EIR and receive public comments. As Shipra said, the Planning Board will not be making a decision on the project tonight, and the discussion is limited to receiving comments on the EIR. So this is the standard timeline for the EIR process, which begins with a distribution of the notice of preparation of the EIR in a 30-day scoping period. We prepared and circulated the draft EIR in January for a 65-day public review period, and please note that the standard review period for an EIR is 45 days. We received 143 public comments during the first review period, and based on those comments, we recirculated the Biological Resources and Utilities and Service Systems sections of the draft EIR on July 22. So we are still currently in the public review period for the recirculated draft EIR, which will end on September 6. When the public review period is complete, we will prepare the final EIR, which will include responses to written and oral comments received for the draft and recirculated draft EIR. Then the project will be reviewed by the City Council as part of their decision-making So, oh geez, sorry. So a CEQA environmental review requires that we analyze all 20 issue areas listed here. At the beginning of the EIR process, we prepared an initial study, which is included as Appendix B of the draft EIR. Based on that initial analysis, we determined that eight of these issues would not result in potentially significant impacts, so the EIR focused on the other 12 issues. Because the housing element addresses citywide development, the EIR was prepared at the programmatic level, which means the analysis does not focus on the individual projects included in the housing element. Rather, this program, EIR, serves as a first-tier environmental document that focuses on the effects of implementing the housing element at the citywide level, and in the future, individual development projects can use this EIR to streamline the environmental review The methodology for the impact analysis, we analyze the impacts associated with the project based on the thresholds provided in the CEQA guidelines. Each section includes the setting for the existing conditions, also referred to as the baseline conditions, and determine if impacts will be below CEQA's significance thresholds. For most of the potentially significant impacts, we included mitigation measures to reduce those impacts, but we did find that there are a couple impacts that are significant and unavoidable, which leads to our findings. So, based on the initial study and EIR, these 11 issue areas were found to have either no impact or less than significant impacts and did not require any mitigation measures. For these six issue areas, we found to have potentially significant impacts, but implementation of mitigation measures provided in the analysis would decrease these impacts to a level of less than significant under CEQA. For air quality measures, for air quality, measures will be required to reduce emissions during the construction and operation periods of the individual housing development projects that will come under the housing element. For biological resources, measures are included to avoid nesting birds prior to the start of construction activities. Also, in response to California Department of Fish and Wildlife's comments on the draft EIR, the Biological Resources Section was included in the recirculated draft EIR to provide additional measures to protect the Lee spells vario, roosting bats, and monarch butterflies. For historical resources, the EIR includes measures to protect any identified historic resources on a project site. For archaeological and tribal cultural resources, their mitigation measures provide requirements during the construction period if resources are discovered on a project site, and projects would be required to also to retain monitors to minimize potential impacts to these resources. The mitigation measures under Geology and Soils outlines the requirements if paleontological resources are discovered on a project site. And to mitigate for potential hazards and hazardous materials, property site assessments must be conducted prior to the start of construction, and if contamination is identified, there are additional measures for cleanup of the site prior to construction. For noise and vibration impacts, the EIR includes multiple mitigation measures to minimize potential impacts during the construction period of the individual housing projects under the housing element. The two issue areas found to have significant unavoidable impacts are transportation and utilities and service systems. Under transportation, CEQA now requires analysis of the vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. A project is analyzed based on the reduction of VMT under three metrics: the average total VMT per service population, per capita, and per employee. Under full buildout of the housing element, the VMT per capita would be reduced beyond the required 15%, but the per service population and employee VMT would not be reduced beyond the required 15%. The EIR does include potential mitigation measures that would reduce average total VMT at a project level, but there are no measures at the program level that would reduce VMT more than the required 15%, which results in a significant VMT under two of the metrics. The Utilities and Service Systems Section analyzed impacts associated with water supply, wastewater and stormwater, solid waste, telecommunications, electricity, and natural gas. All these issues, except wastewater, were found to have less than significant impacts. The analysis found that full buildout under the housing element would increase wastewater generation beyond the treatment capacity that is available at the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant. The draft EIR included a mitigation measure for a sewer service constraints analysis for individual projects, which reduced impacts at the project level. However, there are no measures at the plan level that would reduce the impact to the overall sewer system. Based on comments received on the draft EIR, we added mitigation measures for upgrades to the sewer's conveyance system and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant. So there is now a requirement for a sewer system master plan to be completed in 2023 and a potential diversion option to the LA sewer system for some projects. Because of these additional measures, this section was included in the recirculated draft EIR, but due to the timing of the upgrades and master plan, these measures will not be completed or available by the time development under the housing element will begin, so this is still a significant and unavoidable impact. An EIR requires analysis of a reasonable range of alternatives, as well as the no-project alternative. Under the no-project alternative, the city would continue with implementation of the existing housing element and the growth rate predicted by SCAG for 2029, which is 3,591 units. Overall, this no-project alternative results in fewer environmental impacts in comparison to the, to build out under the housing element, but it would not fulfill the state requirements. Under the city buildout alternative, the analysis considered the buildout of 18,600 units, as established by Measure 1, which would increase the density throughout the city, and the EIR analysis found would be, would be a substantial increase in impacts in comparison to development under the proposed housing element, and which would also result in change of character to the city. So this is the overall schedule for the draft and final EIR. We, as we mentioned, we circulated the draft in January and ended the public review period in March. Based on the comments received, we recirculated two of the sections. That review period will end on September 6, and the final EIR will be completed by September 17. After tonight's meeting, the housing element and draft EIR will be presented to the City Council on September 27, and we anticipate filing the notice of determination in early Again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get the public's comments on the proposed project. While, while we take note of your comments, while we will take note of the comments tonight, please also provide written comments that will be part of the public record. Please send comments to Shipra Rajesh, either by email or mail. Her information is provided here, and the city will be accepting comments on the recirculated draft through September 6. Thank you.
Is that the end of your presentation? Yes. Okay. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to Planning Division staff if you wish to speak. For members who are at home, wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Board. Callers will be placed in the queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of moments for the first callers to get through. Please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer, and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your public comment. Do we have any callers? Do you have any speakers tonight, or callers?
Not yet, but we will wait the two minutes.
Mr. Christensen, you're live with the Planning Board.
Good evening. Good evening, how everyone doing today? My name is Joshua Christensen. I'm a representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and we're talking about these plans, and just want to bring your attention, you know, when we build these houses and these required housing, you know, we got to make sure we have responsible contractors. There's a study that came out last year in June of 2021 from Cal Berkeley. It's how the burden of the taxpayer in the construction industry. The construction industry is separated into two parts, we got commercial and residential. About 90% of the commercial is union workers, which get paid a fair standard wage, or we call a mortgage-paying job. And then the, about 5% of the residential is union, what that 95% of the residential side is not under any kind of union. And that, of those 95%, most of them are on some kind of public assistance where they receive, you know, public assistance for healthcare, public assistance for child support, or not child support, but childcare, we got public assistance for food stamps, and that's the type of construction that there is in the residential. It amounts to about $3 billion a year in the state of California alone that the taxpayers have that burden to pay for. And that's just in construction alone, not including any other, any other type of industry. And so what we're asking today is, when you guys approve or make changes to these plans that you add in there that all workers will receive, you know, a fair wage, all workers will receive healthcare, all contractors that are bidding projects in the city, that they might be able to, be able to provide a they might be able to be able to provide a background of where their, the jobs they've been on before, and what violations that they've had in their past, and where does their manpower come from? Another thing is, we've got to hire local workers. They've got to make sure that workers are not on the road driving, you know, two and three hours for a good job. Or, in the return, as you see sometimes, some products in Burbank, some workers are driving two or three hours to Burbank for a job where they're working 14 hours a day and only making a hundred bucks for that day. That's what we're seeing, and that's the type of instances that we're talking about in the study that we reflect upon. We're asking that you, you as a city, make some recommendations that the city won't get affected by this, that they might be able to, they might be able to ask-
Three minutes. Thank you.
I appreciate your guys' time.
Jared, you're live with the planning board.
Hey, Planning Commission. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Jared Langford. I'm a representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent nearly 5,000 working men and women in and around the Burbank area. Just to piggyback on what my colleague Josh Christensen talked about, you know, we've been real hungry for something in Burbank. I mean, you guys have seen the member outreach, our members have been sending mass public comments to try to get some sort of labor standards into a housing element or specific plan or, you know, on individual projects. And it's not because there's an abundance of good-paying construction jobs around the Burbank area. You know, our members are having to drive further and further and further to downtown LA, to LAX, to places like that, even further just to make a livable wage, a mortgage-paying job with healthcare benefits. You know, there's tons of housing that's supposed to be built under this housing element. And like you heard Josh said, the residential housing market for construction workers is a real bad market. There are not good things that are going on. And, you know, we could build all this housing, and at the same time that we're building this housing, thinking we're doing good things, we're pushing construction workers' families right into poverty. They'll never be able to afford those houses, even if you make them affordable, because they're getting exploited by these contractors, and these developers don't want to do anything about it. They just want to hire the cheapest, get away with it, try to say, oh, it's not our fault, it's on the GC, but they're ultimately responsible for making these decisions. So I think, like, we're at a dire point where we need some sort of worker protection for workers that are in and around the Burbank area. We interviewed tons of workers, and, you know, there's cash pay, there's guys traveling all the way from, you know, 50, 60 miles away just to work there, and they're not receiving any healthcare benefits or anything like that, and they've got to rely on government subsistence. So I wanted to bring up one thing. I know you guys, I see in Section 2.5.1 of the Housing Element Update, there's a line item that says "Housing Plan Goals, Policies, and Programs," including Programs 10 and 11 that provide for updates to local density bonus and inclusionary housing regulations that require an economic feasibility analysis to evaluate the potential impact of adding workforce training and prevailing wage requirements to new housing development. We really appreciate, you know, you guys inserting this language, and I think it's a very good start. It shows that you guys care and want to do something for the workers. I would just suggest, you know, that sentence is a little cloudy, and if we're going to do this, let's do this right. So I'd like to make a recommendation to strike out that line and instead read goals, policies, and programs-
Your three minutes has been reached. Thank you.
How you doing, planning board? Hope you guys were having a great afternoon. My name again is Chuck Powell. I am a 35-year member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And also to piggyback a little bit on Mr. Langford and Mr. Christian, my biggest ask is the affordable housing. And what, how that has affected me is, I have five kids, and three of my children have had to move out of state because they aren't even able to buy a house in the Burbank area close to me, which then again, taking my grandkids away from me. So I would really appreciate if we could get some kind of local hire, you know, implemented into the system here, because the people that live in the city aren't even, when we have our kids, and I'm sure everybody on the board has children, and watching them have to be forced to move away and not be able to see your grandkids because of the housing, the housing costs, and also the having a nice-paying job, affordable job that they can afford to buy these houses, you know? If we're building them, we should be able to buy them. Again, I have two of my sons are carpenters that are working in the area, and it is very hard for them to have to miss baseball games for their kids and things like that, because they are driving, like Jared mentioned, to LAX and San Bernardino, an area that it takes them quite a bit to get to. So again, if we could get a local hire and put in there, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Those are all the speakers that we have.
Great. There being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Vice Chair.
Sure.
I believe we've received all the comments. There was also, as we mentioned before, a packet of comments that were received outside of tonight's meeting. All those comments collectively will be incorporated into the record, and will, since it is a received comment, it will also be, and it's considered during the public comment period of the document that's being recirculated, those will be responded to within the final environmental impact report.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff? Board Member Monaco?
Good question. First of all, I'd like it to be on the record that this is just an amazing amount of work. It's clear, concise. You obviously put a lot of work and thought into this, as well as a lot of trees. I just was wondering, is there one area that you would like to bring up, and it may or may not, that we should focus on, whether environmental, economic, anything in particular that you think we should be looking at?
Board-
More perspective than-
I think what I would suggest is, since this particular agenda item is very limited, I think you've done what we've asked, and that was to convene this item, allow for public input. That public input would continue through the 6th of September. I think there's a separate agendized item where your question that you're asking now is very appropriate, and we could respond to it within the context of that agendized item.
Thank you.
Mr. Eldridge, do you have-
Yeah. I have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure if it's, I just was wondering, so this affects, like, all future projects that require an EIR, or?
I'll speak in general terms, and then I've got my subject matter experts here to my left. What the environmental document that's before you is intended to do is to analyze the project that Ms. Rajesh presented, and that is the update to the general plan regarding the housing element, the safety element, and the environmental justice policies that are going to be incorporated in the various sections of the general plan. So the, because it is a project under CEQA, it's been analyzed at kind of its overall buildout. So everything happening, all the buildout of density, all the buildout of FAR. So what this does is it provides, it's intended to provide clarity on full buildout of the project and what the impacts are, so that decision-makers, in this case, the city council, would be able to evaluate the project, evaluate the potential impacts under CEQA, and then make a determination based on that, on the project, and then also on the impacts, and some that are identified as significant and unavoidable, for them to be able to approve something of that sort. They would do what they call, make findings of fact, and they'd have to also adopt the statement of overriding consideration as to, and there's a process that you go through in doing that, and the intent of that is to be able to determine, if they were to approve a project like that, what the impacts of the project are, and do the benefits of the project outweigh the potential impacts to the environment. So all that kind of gets packaged together. Part of that narrative is also responding to public comments during, excuse me, during this period, that then get packaged in what they call the final environmental impact report. So the whole purpose of this is really, it's a public disclosure document that analyzes the project, and that's what's being forwarded at some point to the decision-makers, i.e. the councils, since they're the ones that have the final say in approving a general plan amendment. They would be looking at that environmental assessment. With that said, individual projects that come forth at a future date would have to look at what Ms. Rajesh was referencing, mitigation measures that are incorporated into different areas where they may be impacting. So the example of, we were talking about biological, so if there's potential for us to impact nesting birds, or the bats, or the butterflies, and it's found out that they're within that particular location, we would have to take on mitigation measures to reduce the impact to those particular species. Same thing with cultural resources. If we identify that there's a potential cultural resource on the site, that would require or trigger certain mitigation measures, and there's others for air quality, and it kind of goes on from there. So it would affect projects in the future if adopted, because there'd be a plan, what we call a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that we would have to go back to and check the project against, and make sure that anywhere where those particular mitigation measures apply, that they would be applied to the project.
Right. I understand that. So basically, this is for the council to decide, this is how things will be handled in the future.
It is a disclosure document for the council to understand what the impacts are, and then also accompanying that mitigation measures that would be applied to future projects under the, under the housing element, if built and are subject to the housing element, like the opportunity sites, build-out, or housing projects.
Okay. And is there any other mitigations? Because I know they discussed some mitigations about sewage. Are there anything, like, any other mitigations that you guys are looking to?
There are. I would refer you back to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. There's a draft of it in your attachment, and in there, there's a list of short-term and long-term goals.
Yes.
Yeah, so they have both short-term goals to deal with individual projects, where as a development comes online, they may be required to pay fees as well as build out infrastructure. In some instances, where projects are coming online, they may need to do diversion of sewer-
To LA.
To LA. And then, long-term goals would be update the city sewer system master plan. So we have a 20-year vision of what it means to accommodate all this development, and with that also to analyze what would be an impact fee that would be applied to development going in the long term, going forward.
That's all. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? If there are no other questions, I now declare this item closed. The motion should be to note and file, if someone wants to make that motion. So we moved the note and file. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second. Can we poll the board?
Board Member Elric?
Yes.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizotti?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Moving on to item number two, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the city's proposed 2021 through 2029 six-cycle housing element, safety element, and environmental justice general plan updates. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any financial, legal, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
Mr. Ramirez have the, no. Three noes. Mr. Ramirez have notices by law given?
All the required notices have been provided. Thank you.
Are there any communications on this matter?
I would just include for the record the comments that we received earlier, since they are relevant to the project.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Can I have the presentation, please? It's off? Could I have the presentation? Good evening, Vice Chair Rizotti, and members of the board. My name is Shipra Rajesh, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, you are being requested to consider state-required updates to the Burbank 2035 general plan, including the housing element and safety element, and incorporation of environmental justice goals and policy throughout the general plan. For tonight's presentation, I am also joined by other staff from the Planning Division, Housing Division, Public Works, BWP, Fire Department, and Transportation Planning, as well as the consultant team, KWA Associates, Ringcon Consultants, and Fair and Peers. This slide provides the outline of the presentation. I will begin the presentation by elaborating on the importance of maintaining a state-compliant housing element, before talking about the process and schedule for the housing element update, including the public participation involved in the process. Thereafter, I will provide details on the proposed updates to the housing element, safety element, as well as environmental justice policy updates that have been incorporated throughout the general plan. Next, I'll talk about the CEQA process for the proposed general plan updates, and I will conclude the presentation by providing an overview of the next steps involved in I think we have the wrong presentation up. It's the presentation number for item two. This is the right presentation. This was the presentation overview that I just went over. And on this slide, I talk about the Burbank 2035 city's general plan, which is a state-required policy document made up of different elements that provide guidance in shaping the future physical growth and development of the city. Burbank 2035 includes the following elements: housing, land use, mobility, safety, noise, air quality and climate change, open space and conservation, and plan realization. Every eight years, the housing element of the general plan must be updated and reviewed by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. The city's existing housing element was adopted in 2014 and covered the planning period from 2014 to 2021. Therefore, the housing element is currently out of compliance and is required to get updated for the 2021-2029 planning period. In addition, a number of state laws taking effect in recent years trigger other general plan updates upon revision to any element of the general plan, which in this case is the housing element. This includes required revisions to the safety element and revisions throughout the general plan to incorporate goals, policies regarding environmental justice as defined in the state law. Currently, the city is in the process of updating Burbank 2035 general plan, housing element, safety element, and environmental justice for the 2021-2029 planning period. I will provide more details on the proposed general plan updates in the following slides. I will provide more details on the proposed general plan updates in the following slides. Maintaining a state compliant housing element is very important for numerous reasons that are listed on this slide. If the city fails to adopt a compliant sixth cycle housing element by October fifteen, twenty twenty one, it will be subject to a range of penalties or consequences, including potential litigation from housing rights organizations, developers and the state attorney general. If the element isn't adopted and found in compliance by HCD by October fifteen, twenty twenty two, the city won't be eligible for the extended rezoning deadline of October twenty twenty four for the Oh, thank you. The city won't be eligible for extended rezoning deadline of October twenty twenty four for the housing opportunity sites and will fall out of compliance until the rezoning in the Golden State specific plan and downtown specific plan is complete. In absence of an HCD approved housing element, the city will be required to provide ministerial review and approval for any new housing, housing project, which includes affordable housing on a site that is zoned or will be zoned in future for multifamily residential development. Additionally, the city will no longer be eligible for any housing grants or other state administered grant and loan programs. Moreover, a state compliant housing element is required to avoid carryover of the city's RENA number into next housing element cycle for any shortfall of sites. Finally, in absence of a compliant housing element, the courts will also have the authority to take away the city's permitting authority for building permits and can impose fines of up to hundred thousand dollars per month until the element is brought into compliance. This slide provides a snapshot of the overall schedule and where we are in the process. The process began in July twenty twenty with a city council study session. Subsequently, the city staff conducted community workshops for the public, including developers, housing service providers and housing advocacy, advocacy groups in the August and October of twenty twenty and February of twenty twenty one. The city submitted first draft of housing element for HCD's review in April of twenty twenty one. Pursuant to SEQA guidelines, a scoping meeting for the proposed general plan updates was conducted in March of twenty twenty one. Planning board study sessions were conducted in January and May of twenty twenty one. The city released draft EIR for the proposed general plan updates in January of twenty twenty two. And two public hearings were conducted in March and April of twenty twenty two to receive public comments on the draft EIR. The city released recirculated draft EIR addressing the public comments received on the draft EIR in July of twenty twenty two. The red arrow indicates where we are now in the process. With planning board public hearing of the draft twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine housing element. The proposed general plan updates will be presented to the city council at a noticed public hearing on September twenty seven, twenty twenty two to meet the state's October fifteen, twenty twenty two rezoning deadline for the housing opportunity sites. This slide provides an outline of the community outreach efforts for the project. A project webpage was created to serve the information hub, to serve as the information hub for the updated, for the update process. And the draft housing element was made available for public review starting April twenty twenty one. Four study sessions took place, two with city council in July and October of twenty twenty and two with planning board in January and May of twenty twenty one, as mentioned before. We held stakeholder meetings in August twenty twenty with several local service providers and nonprofits, as well as developers and representatives from local business community. Additionally, there were online community workshops, one in October of twenty twenty and one in late February of twenty twenty one. Translation services in Armenian and Spanish were available. The workshops were streamlined live on the city's YouTube channel and local cable channel and video recordings were posted to the project webpage and on YouTube, making the workshop content accessible to people who were not able to attend live. The staff conducted a California Environmental Quality Act scoping or SEQA scoping meeting in March of twenty twenty one as a part of the required environmental review for this project. A community survey was also available online during September through December twenty twenty with options in English, Spanish and Armenian. And the staff received two twenty six responses, which are included as a part of the appendix to the housing element. Two planning board public hearings were held in March and April of twenty twenty two for receiving public comments on the draft EIR for the project, which was released for public review in January of twenty twenty two. The city revised the draft EIR based on the comments received and tonight the public was provided an opportunity to co- comment on the recirculated sections of the EIR. For each of these public outreach efforts, a number of strategies were used to help spread the word. The city's public information office assisted with announcements on the main city webpage, e-notify email blasts, press release and social media posts. Staff posted ads in the LA Times, created flyers and prepared announcements at city council, senior board and landlord tenant commission. Staff from the Burbank Housing Corporation helped to notify all of the BHC residents. Additionally, staff and the consultant maintained an email interest list that started with the stakeholder group contacts and grew throughout the process for anyone that requested to receive updates on the project. This slide provides an overview of the major components or chapters of the housing element. The housing element includes following six major components. Number one, review of effectiveness of the existing housing element that was in effect from two thousand fourteen to twenty twenty one. Number two, assessment of existing and projected housing needs that discusses the characteristics of Burbank's population and housing stock to better understand the nature and extent of unmet housing needs. It also identifies city's RENA allocation. Number three, evaluation of constraints to the development of housing. This section includes an analysis of potential and actual environmental infrastructure market and governmental constraint to the maintenance, improvement or development of housing for all income levels, including housings for people with disabilities. Constraints can include policies or conditions that make it difficult to develop. This can include permitting process, development standards, availability of appropriately sized lots and so on. Number four, identification of financial, land, administrative resources. This section describes and analyzes potential resources available to facilitate the development, rehabilitation and preservation of housing in the city. Number five, housing plan. This section of the housing element is a list of housing programs that are intended to address cities' identified housing needs, goals and policies. Housing programs are specifically intended to be activities, actions or ongoing efforts that can be practically implemented during the eight year planning period from two, two twenty one to twenty twenty nine. Number six, affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH, which analyzes the factors creating impediments to fair housing in the city and provides fair action programs to address these impediments to fair housing. The next few slides will provide more details on each of the major components in the housing element. The first major component of the housing element includes review of effectiveness of the fifth cycle housing element for the twenty fourteen, twenty twenty one planning period. The housing element update must evaluate the city's progress in addressing its fair share of housing. The Regional Planning Agency, Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, establishes this number for the region and determines each city's regional housing needs assessment or RENA allocation. The RENA represents the minimum number of housing units that the city is required to plan for in its housing element by identifying adequate sites through the Burbank twenty thirty five general plan and zoning residential capacity. For the prior pa- planning cycle, RENA number for the city was two thousand six hundred and eighty four units. As shown in the table, during the two thousand fourteen, twenty twenty one eight year planning period, the city issued building permits for a total of thousand eighty one units, representing forty percent of its total RENA allocation of two thousand six hundred and eighty four units. As indicated on the table, the city has made limited progress in very low and moderate income category. A majority of the generated units results from city approved accessory dwelling units or ADUs. The city has issued five forty two ADU permits between two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty one, averaging to one eighty one ADU permits per year with three hundred and twenty two ADU permits issued in twenty twenty one alone. The second major component of the housing element includes assessment of existing and projected housing needs. This table indicates Burbank's RENA allocation for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine planning period or sixth RENA cycle. That is eight thousand seven hundred and seventy two units distributed among four income categories. The city is not responsible for producing these units per se, but the city is responsible for creating a regulatory framework inclusive of goals, policies and programs that facilitates the development of these new dwelling units through both public and private efforts during the twenty twenty one, twenty nine planning period. Additionally, pursuant to state HCD requirements, the city must plan for a sufficient buffer of new housing units beyond the required RENA number, which is at fourteen percent or one thousand two hundred and thirty nine additional dwelling units for the city of Burbank. The buffer is intended to offset the unfulfilled development of projected dwelling units on the opportunity sites noted in the housing element update. Inclusive of the buffer and the required RENA allocation, the city has undertaken a planning and environmental assessment process that accounts for a total of ten thousand and eleven dwelling units. The third major component of the housing element analyzes various governmental constraints such as zoning regulations, local ordinances and development fees, market related constraints, including price of land, cost of construction and availability of financing. And infrastructure and environmental factors such as flood, earthquakes and wildfires that could possibly act as constraints to housing development and improvement in the city. Moreover, this component of the housing element discusses existing and proposed programs and policies that have been included to reduce impediments or constraints to development of housing. For example, to enhance development feasibility, the city will be updating and simplifying its multifamily development standards, which is considered a governmental constraint to housing development. Furthermore, to reduce the bu- burden on developers caused due to different market related constraints, the city will continue to offer increased densities and reduced parking requirements through its inclusionary housing and density bonus programs to effectively reduce the per unit cost of land. The fourth component of housing element focuses on analysis of availability of sites to accommodate the projected housing growth for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine planning period. The city plans to accommodate the level of housing growth by using a combination of the methods, including pending and entitled residential projects, housing opportunity sites in the downtown TOD specific plan and Golden State specific plan, accessory dwelling units and acquisition and rehabilitation of market rate rental units to provide long term affordable housing using, uh using the city's committed assistance program. The city anticipates around two thousand three hundred and thirty five dwelling units resulting from the pending and approved residential development projects, as well as one thousand six hundred ADUs for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine planning period. Additionally, under the city's committed assistance program, the city would commit financial assistance to help acquire, rehabilitate and purchase affordability covenants on ten market rate rental units within the first three years of the housing element. Finally, a substantial number of housing development, around three thousand six hundred, six hundred and twenty four units will occur in the housing opportunity sites that are distributed in the downtown specific plan area and the Golden State specific plan area. The next slide provides more details on the housing opportunity sites. This slide shows the distribution of housing opportunity sites within the city. The sixth cycle housing element identifies nineteen opportunity sites to accomod- accommodate the projected growth in housing needed to meet the city's RENA allocation for the twenty twenty one, twenty nine planning period. Twelve of the opportunity sites are in the downtown specific plan area and seven opportunity sites are located in the Golden State specific plan area. The opportunity sites have been identified based on the realistic conditions that supported development of housing as more likely than commercial space in the identified site based on the market studies for the specific plan areas and recent development trends. The opportunity sites are located near, near the city's major employment and transit hubs, which will facilitate residential development with higher densities, providing housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community, as well as addressing the three is to one jobs to housing imbalance within the city. Appendix D of the housing element, attached as exhibit C to this report, provides more information on the opportunity sites. The next major component of the housing element is the housing plan for the twenty twenty one, twenty nine planning period, which includes twenty seven housing programs that are intended to address the city's identified housing needs, goals and policies. The first set of programs are connected to goal one. Existing housing and neighborhood conditions. Goal one states that Burbank seeks to enhance the quality of existing housing and neighborhoods. Program under this goal are targeted towards investing in local neighborhoods and maintaining and preserving properties to create housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community. The programs focus on anti-displacement policies for protecting existing tenants, training of city officials in educating property owners on property maintenance and other neighborhood preservation issues, as well as administering federal housing choice vouchers that provide rental assistance subsidies to extremely low and very low income households. These programs will maintain existing residential neighborhoods while providing affordable housing opportunities for lower in- income households. The second set of programs are connected to goal two, which states that Burbank seeks to provide housing sites that accommodate a range of housing types to meet the diverse need of existing and future residents. Adequate housing sites includes programs that will ensure provision of sites for housing development at all affordability levels to meet the city's RENA requirements for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine planning period. The identification of suitable sites for housing within the eight year planning period is critical to achieve a state compliant housing element. Programs under this goal include policies to streamline review of housing development projects, policies that incentivize construction of ADUs by creating pre-approved ADU plans and reducing ADU processing fees and implementing tracking system for monitoring housing development. Specific plan updates to rezone the identified opportunity sites for facilitating housing development and collaboration with private developers to create opportunities for new, for new housing development at all affordability levels. The third set of programs are connected to goal three. Goal three states that Burbank will continue to facilitate the development of housing affordable to all economic segments of the community. The programs that support this goal are directed towards creating policies that incentivize development of affordable housing of various types and sizes. The policies include update to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance and density bonus ordinance to incentivize development of affordable units for lo- for large families and disabled people, as well as well as creation of a streamlined process for implementation of density bonus incentives, concessions and waivers. Furthermore, the city will strive to provide affordable housing opportunities by seeking funding to develop transitional and supportive housing, engaging with major employers in the city for provision of housing, incentivizing infill housing development and exploring possibility of establishing an impact fee on non-residential development to support construction of affordable housing. To address the comments received from the carpenters union, the city updated program number ten and eleven to include an economic feasibility analysis as part of the updates to density bonus and inclusionary housing regulations to assess the physical impact of including prevailing wage and skilled workforce requirements on housing projects in order to ensure that the city can meet its housing goals under the housing element while also helping promote a living wage for construction workers. The fourth set of programs are connected to goal four, which states that Burbank will focus on removing governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement and development of housing. The programs under this goal are directed towards streamlining the housing approval process by removing regulatory constraints and incorporating objective development standards to facilitate development of a variety of affordable housing while protecting and preserving existing neighborhoods. In addition to facilitating streamlined review process, inclusion of objective development standards will put the city in a better position for developers utilizing a variety of available state housing incentives, excuse me, such as density bonus and Senate Bill thirty five, which allows for streamlined ministerial approval for qual, qual, qualifying projects. Programs that include updates to the city's multifamily development standards and lot consolidation will enable small and mid-sized multifamily housing projects that provide housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community. The fifth set.
It's like a prize fight ship where you.
The fifth set of programs are connected to goal five. Goal five states that Burbank will promote non-discrimination and fair and equal housing opportunities for all persons. This, the programs that support this goal include policies that are intended to create awareness to promote fair housing practices through increased public notification and outreach. That includes distribut, distributing fair housing brochures, conducting workshops and trainings. Additionally, the programs include policies that focus on expanding the range of housing options available and accessible to persons with disabilities and extremely low income households. Furthermore, programs that include landlord tenant, tenant counseling and implementation of homelessness plan will prevent displacement and potential homelessness and address homelessness within the city. As required by the state law, the twenty twenty one, twenty nine, six cycle housing element update includes an assessment of fair housing that is consistent with the analysis required by federal affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH. Under the AFFH, all public agencies in the state must administer programs and activities relating to housing and community development in a manner that affirmatively furthers fair housing and must also take no action inconsistent with this obligation. The AFFH component of the housing element analyzes the impediments to fair housing within the city. It analyzes the ratio and economic patterns of segregation at the regional level and local level and analyzes access to economic, environmental and educational opportunities within the city. As well, as well as identifies high resource areas within the city. Resources include access to education, economic, transportation and environmental opportunities. Based on the economic, environmental and educational criteria established by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee or TCAC, the California Department of Housing and Community Development or HCD, the majority of the Burbank census tracts are identified as areas of highest and high resources. As indicated in dark blue and light blue areas on the map shown on the slide, only two of the city's twenty four census tracts are identified as moderate resource. These two census tracts are located in the southeastern portion of the city along the I five freeway and are shown in the lighter green turquoise color. This indicates that most Burbank residents have a high level of access to resources and opportunities that can impact educational attainment, earnings from employment and economic mobility. As indicated, as indicated by the red dots on the map, which represents the housing opportunity sites, most of the opportunity sites identified in the housing element are located in high resource areas with one site located in moderate resource area. The entitled and pending housing projects are indicated by yellow dots and a majority of the projects are located in high resource areas of the city with two projects in moderate resource areas. The city conducted public outreach, included community workshop and survey to solicit information on factors that create impediments to fair housing in the city. Based on the information received, there were five factors that were identified as issues that caused impediments to fair housing within the cities. These include availability of affordable housing of various types for Burbank's residents, lack of awareness of fair housing services and fair housing rights, fair housing for the special needs population and availability of accessible housing as well as neighborhood revitalization. In addition to the programs included within the elements housing plan, the AFFH establishes quantifiable action items to address the factors that create impediments to fair housing within the city. Some of the examples of fair housing actions included in the AFFH component of housing element are implementation of streamlined approval process for affordable housing projects that qualify for tracts credits or other grants. The city is planning on achieving this by adopting downtown specific plan and golden state specific plan. That will include objective design standards and streamline approval process. Additionally, as a part of the adoption of the downtown specific plan, the city will incorporate policies streamlining and incentivizing the approval of land use entitlements for accessible units. Another example include updates to the inclusionary housing and density bonus ordinance to effectively integrate affordable units in market rate projects. Table B eleven, that was B eleven in appendix B, that is attached as exhibit C to the staff report, provides the list of fair housing actions for the twenty twenty one, twenty nine planning period. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, other general plan updates are triggered per state law upon revising one element of the general plan. Because the housing element is being updated, these additional updates are therefore also required. This includes revisions to the city's safety element and inclusion of environmental justice policies and goals within the Burbank twenty thirty five general plan. Per state law, key updates to the Burbank safety element include upda, updates to the maps and data identifying flooding and fire hazards and updates to city's goals and policies for emergency response and preparedness, especially as they relate to city's projected climate exposure, vulnerability and environmental justice issues. Specifically, the city is required to include a climate adaptation plan, detailing adaptation and resiliency strategies for the vulnerable communities of the city. Additionally, as a part of the safety element update, the city is required to ensure that all new residential development located in hazardous areas have at least two emergency evacuation routes. Moreover, the city is required to update its local hazard mitigation plan to prioritize adaptation and mitigation strategies for the most vulnerable communities. The city is also required to address risk of fire in state responsibility areas and via, and very high fire, very high fire hazard severity zones by creating awareness among the residents, the property owners who live in the very high fire hazard severity zones and by updating its building code to exceed the requirements of California Building Code. The safety element revisions are subject to review by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection in conjunction with CAL FIRE, which is scheduled for twentieth of September twenty twenty two. Exhibit D to the staff report provides an overview of all the updates that have been included in the safety element. This slide provides examples of the safety element policy updates. One of the updated policy within the emergency response and preparation goal of the safety element includes establishment of designated emergency response and evacuation routes throughout the city for each climate hazard focusing on the most vulnerable communities. Under the goal fire protection of the safety element, updated policies have been included to increase the resilience of new development in high risk areas by ensuring that all new residential development have at least two emergency evacuation route. Another example of a new policy within the seismic safety goal of the safety element requires maintenance of uninterrupted water supplies during earthquakes and other seismic activities. Exhibit D attached to the staff report includes the updates to the safety element. In addition to the safety element revisions, the housing element update also triggers a requirement that cities consider environmental justice within their general plan, either as its own standalone element or incorporated throughout elements of the general plan. State law defines environmental justice as the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of people of all races, cultures and incomes with respect to the development, adoption, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, policies and regulations. In other words, the main, the main goal of environmental justice is to prevent the development of environmental policies that unfairly impact communities that are already considered disadvantaged and to ensure that there is equal access to planning process for all residents, including those that reside within disadvantaged communities. The California Environmental Protection Agency uses CAL and Viro screen mapping tool to determine a score for each US census tract to identify disadvantaged communities throughout the state. The CAL and Viro screen score for each census tract is determined by combining indicators for pollution burden and population characteristics such as income and age for each census tract within the city as indicated in the figure on the slide. The figure shows that seven census tracts in central, northwest and southeast Burbank shown in orange and bright orange color on the map have a combined disadvantaged community score of seventy five percent or higher and are considered disadvantaged communities. The environmental justice policies that are incorporated throughout the Burbank twenty thirty five general plan are targeted to reduce health risks to disadvantaged communities, promote civil engagement, reduce pollution exposure, promote public facilities and prioritize the needs of communities. The next slide provides examples of the proposed environmental justice policies. This slide indicates examples of some of the existing policies within existing elements of Burbank twenty thirty five general plan that have been updated or revised to address the environmental justice component. Under the land use element of existing policy, that warrants review of non-residential uses with the potential to degrade quality of life. It has been updated to include focus on discouraging generators of high levels of air pollution that would impact the disadvantaged communities. Under mobility element of an existing policies on developing comprehensive transportation system, this policy has been revised to include availability of transportation to connect disadvantaged communities. Within air quality and climate change element of the general plan, an existing policy that focuses on educating the public on measures to reduce the impact of air pollution has been expanded to specifically include disadvantaged communities. Within the noise element, existing policy on monitoring noise impacts in residential neighborhoods to reduce noise exposure by implementation of neighborhood protection plan has been expanded to include disadvantaged communities. And under the open space and conservation element of the general plan, existing policy that encourages public participation in management and development of open space, it has been revised to include seeking participation by disadvantaged communities. Exhibit D attached to the staff report provides a list of revised policies that have been included to address the environmental justice component. The proposed update of the city's housing and safety element as well as incorporation of environmental justice policies within the general plan is deemed as a project that, that is subject to SEQA. To fulfill the review requirements of SEQA, the city prepared a program environmental impact report pursuant to the SEQA guidelines, which was released for public review in January of twenty twenty two. The draft EIR provided the city's environmental assessment of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine housing element, safety element and environmental justice general plan updates by reviewing existing conditions, analyzing potential environmental impacts and identifying feasible mitigation measures that reduce potentially significant impacts of the proposed project. The city received around one forty three comment letters on the draft EIR and the city revised the biological resource section and utility system section of the draft EIR to address some of the comments received. Revised portion of the draft EIR were recirculated for a forty seven day public review period on July, on July twenty, twenty second twenty twenty two to provide an opportunity to the public to co, comment on the new information contained in the recirculated draft EIR. The public review period will end on September sixth, twenty twenty two. After the forty seven day public review period of the recirculated draft EIR is completed on September sixth, twenty twenty two, staff and the city's environmental consultant will review and respond to the public comments. These responses will be incorporated in the final EIR along with findings of fact and statement of overriding consideration. After receiving the planning board recommendation on the project tonight, the project and the final EIR will be presented to the city council at a noticed public hearing that is scheduled for September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. The city council will make a deter, determination on the project and certify the EIR. It should be noted that the city is required to adopt the updated housing element prior to the October fifteen, twenty twenty two rezoning deadline for the housing opportunity sites. The staff recommends that the planning board adopt the following recommendation. A resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank recommending the city council adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Burbank approving the twenty twenty one, twenty nine, sixth cycle housing element, safety element and environmental justice general plan updates. This concludes my presentation. Staff and consulting team are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. For callers, please remember to lower your volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Do we have any speakers, callers?
Not yet, but we will wait the two minutes. We have a caller in the queue. Jared Langford, you're live with the Planning Board.
Hello, Planning Commission. You know, my apologies, I probably gave my public comment in the wrong spot, giving it at the previous item. I'm not going to repeat everything I said. You know, I'm with the Carpenters Union, representing 5,000 working men and women in the area. I just wanted to make one recommendation under 2.5.1 of the Housing Element Update to strike the sentence that says that require an economic feasibility analysis to evaluate the potential impact of adding workforce training and prevailing wage requirements to new housing development, and change that to the implementation of a local hire apprenticeship policy to have the skilled construction workforce necessary to produce an ample supply of mixed-income and affordable housing units and ensure equitable, sustainable, and livable communities. That's my comment. Thank you.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments.
No further comments. Does the board have any questions for staff? If you want, I'll lead off. Some of these are comments, some of these are questions. So, we've been working on this for quite a while, obviously, for a number of months and years in some cases. You know, our legislation in our state has manipulated the housing market, and now that the housing crisis is over, what is the next plan? We already have an abundance of housing. We're going to get more collection as the market continues to worsen. So I'm just curious as to what will be the plan with all this development and all this inventory that we're going to have? Has anyone identified that? Has anyone thought about that? Has anyone countered back to our state about that?
Thank you, Vice Chair Rizotti. If I understand your question correctly, the Housing Element provides adequate sites and indicates all the opportunity sites where the future housing growth will be accommodated in addition to providing other programs and policies which sort of creates a pathway for construction or development of these housing units. So the Housing Element document takes into account all the, with the help of EIR, all the potential impacts that might occur due to the implementation of this project, and provides a meaningful pathway for development of the housing units which has been allotted to our city in the form of RENA allocation. If Karen wants to add anything else?
I'm not sure I understand the question because you started by saying now that the housing crisis is over.
The housing crisis is over. I can take you out right now in the city of Burbank and find you a house or a condo and negotiate on that price. So, I was concerned about this a while ago because the state was manipulating the housing market through legislation, and we've seen this probably in the 80s where we had a glut of inventory when the market turned. The market is turning and will continue, it is on a downward trend. So, my question is, has anyone asked or talked to the state about what are we going to do with all this excess housing that we've manipulated through legislation? Because it's happening.
Well, and I think as Shipra showed, the city's production in the last cycle was only 40% of its regional needs. And so, we have a very aggressive monitoring program for meeting our RENA this cycle. So while we have all these sites and we have these programs to help facilitate, the city every year is going to need to be showing how the housing is actually occurring. And if you're, you know, producing an abundance of housing, you will be, you know, one of the few cities in the state.
So that leads me to my second question or comment. Personally, I've never really believed in the RENA numbers, and I don't think that they were accurate, have been accurate, and now we have cities that are suing because they believe that they're not accurate. So have we questioned our RENA numbers that were being allocated? Because others are, and I personally never really thought that our RENA numbers were accurate.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rizotti. So, with respect to some of the other cities who have questioned the RENA, I can think of City of Irvine. The overall trend has been that the SCAG assigned RENA number, they've been able to justify and correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, and these RENA numbers that have been assigned are as a result of the lack of, as Karen mentioned, lack of effort on our part to provide housing for all economic categories of the community and people with disabilities in our previous RENA cycle. So, the current RENA number that has been assigned, also the situation of housing as the state law puts forward, there are various state laws which talk about how a housing crisis is something that all local jurisdictions have to address. To answer your question directly, no, we have not questioned it because the trends show that more, you know, more often than not, the cities comply with the RENA requirement.
And during the appeal period, and I can't recall how many jurisdictions in SCAG appealed the numbers, but only two adjustments were made by SCAG. So, it's pretty much, you know, these are the numbers that you've got for the eighth cycle. SCAG already is working on soliciting input for changes for the seventh cycle, if you're interested in, you know, looking at that point moving forward.
Vice Chair, if I can add to, I think part of the issue, and this is kind of going back to when the item was being developed as far as the RENA, the allocation, and the methodology. If I recall back to that point in time, our production numbers back then were very poor. I think our production numbers were less than 500 units back in the day. So, one of the things that I recall when they were having hearings, and I'm thinking back to the city of Pasadena, who was challenging some of the RENA numbers, is they had estimated certain projection numbers for units, and I think, and they were actually pretty good at building units, and they were denied their request for a modification. So, my recollection at the time, back in the day when that was occurring, is that we had poor numbers to begin with. We have 130,000 employees and housing's at 44,000 units in the city. So, when we were looking at all of that, and it was presented to the council, there wasn't direction from council to, you know, go forth and appeal the RENA number, but that was part of the discussion at my recollection back in the day.
Where are we at with SB 9? I think we were going to come up with the plan, or we're working on a plan with SB 9?
Yeah, so in the narrative in the document, it references SB 9. If you recall, we had a moratorium.
Right.
And, I'm sorry, an urgency ordinance that was adopted, and the urgency ordinance established interim standards that we are using to evaluate SB 9 projects, but we have to come back to you through a zone text amendment and then eventually to council with a new set of regulations that would be applied consistent with state law, so that we have permanent development standards for SB 9 projects. And part of that is going to look at development standards that address impacts based on that particular regulatory requirement from the state.
So, the other head-scratcher for me, which is, it's almost like one hand doesn't know what the other's doing, is our state is telling us we're having a water crisis. We don't have any water, but yet you want us to develop 12,000 units, which will equate to about 72,000 toilets, sinks, and showers. Has anyone ever questioned that and said, "You're putting all these water restrictions, we got all these water restrictions, but yet you're forcing us to build"? I mean, I can't, for a long time, I've not said anything, but just up until recent with the recent restrictions, I just can't sit here and justifiably say, "Yeah, let's keep building with deterioration of our water supply." So, I'm just wondering, has there been any explanation or pushback or saying to the state, "This is not making sense," right? I mean, normal people, I think, are saying that.
So, I can start, but then I believe we do have subject matter experts. I'm not sure if we have someone. Yes, we do. We have Richard Wilson from BWP Water. So I just want to make sure, when we're going to take a project of this magnitude with this number of units, we're required to do what they call is a water supply assessment, and that's done by the city, and it's a report that's prepared and it's reviewed by BWP, and in essence becomes a city's assessment of what the demands for water usage will be as part of the project that was undertaken. The conclusion, which was that based on current availability of water, the different ways in which we obtain water, and also, I believe, as part of their assessment with MWD and the availability of water, the city determined that there was sufficient water capacity to support the required proposed development under the project, which includes evaluating up to the 10,000 units. But Mr. Wilson might be able to kind of add to that since he's the subject matter expert.
Because things are getting worse, so I'm just wondering how you're calculating a worse scenario.
Sure. My name is Richard Wilson. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Water Systems at Burbank Water and Power. Very good questions. It's a question we get a lot with the drought being in the news, obviously. A little bit of background, there's 26 member agencies that make up the Metropolitan Water District, and every five years, each member agency, including the district, has to produce what's called an urban water management plan. And in that plan, we take a look at what our supplies are and what our demands are, and we look at those supply and demand scenarios out through 2040. And each of the 26 member agencies do the same thing, and they take all of that information in the Metropolitan Water District, and they look at all of the demands of the 26 member agencies, and they compare that with their projected supplies. So at the moment, as you know, the state water project has a 0% allocation. Colorado River is, you know, in a situation where the lakes are low, but we're talking about the supply side as it currently is. And when you look at some of the projects that are projected by 2030, and these are new supply projects, regional supply projects that are already in design, that could bring up to 460,000 acre-feet of additional water each year, and an acre-foot is roughly 325,000 gallons of water. It's enough for two families for a year. So we're talking about 460,000 acre-feet of additional supplies each year through these projects, these water supply projects that are regional in nature, that we're not talking about now. In addition, there are projects that are at the conceptual or SEQA phase that could bring on another 330,000 acre-feet in addition. So that is calculated into their MWD's supply projections, and that's how they look at whether or not they can meet the projected supplies. Now, there's also water use, which we need to limit water use. I mean, these developments that we're talking about are going to be the city's highest efficient developments in water use areas that the city has. We've got high-efficiency fixtures. Irrigation will be predominantly, if not all of it, recycled water. They don't have the landscaping that homes use, and we still have the issue in Burbank of people using the majority of their water for outside irrigation, and that's something on the demand side that we have to stop. Too much water is being wasted on grass, and the old way of doing things has to stop even with the projected supplies available. We have conditions now where we can't afford to continue to use water in the way that we're using it, and it really is low-hanging fruit. I'm not saying that we can conserve our way out of this. It's a multifaceted approach in how we attack this, but outdoor water use is rife for being able to reduce our water demands, and the units that we're talking about are very low in terms of outdoor water use.
I don't, I'm glad you brought that up because I'm going to introduce this as a future agenda item, but I don't think, I haven't seen a plan. Why aren't we purple-piping this city? When we do road construction, like on my street, we just tore open the whole street for gas lines. Why didn't we purple-pipe that road and then later connected it to the irrigation system? Or why aren't we doing a test pilot program with tanks? We throw away 50% of our recycled water. Why don't we have a truck as a vehicle incentive for the city? as a, as a, as a vehicle incentive for the city to make money, deliver recycled water to the tank, and we can irrigate our lawns? I don't see our sustainability committee, I haven't seen anything from DWP of, of, of a plan to purple pipe, or, we have, we have the reclaimed water, we could sell it, I know that people would pay for it, and instead of using regular water for their, for their lawns. So, that was gonna be an agenda item that I was gonna break up later, but since you're here, I just wonder.
Yeah. There's, there's, there's a lot there. You've hit on a, a lot of different topics as it relates to recycled water. So, first thing, you're right, about half of the recycled water that the city produces goes into the LA River. And that's a shame, because it's a community resource that we could benefit from. Now, what can we do with that recycled water? Now, there's, there's different options we have. And some of them take more planning, and we're in the planning phases now, but the, the biggest bang for the buck, and the, the holy grail, if that's what you wanna call it, eventually is going to be what's called direct potable reuse, where we can take that water, we can use an, use an advanced treatment system, and put that water directly at the head of a treatment plant, or directly into the potable distribution system itself. And there is a demonstration plant, they've changed, MWD has changed the name, I think they call it California Pure Water Project, where they do exactly that, and they use a reverse osmosis system where they demonstrate that they meet drinking water standards. They're, they're not legally able to do it, because the regulations are not, haven't been fully codified yet to, to do that. But, that is the, the holy grail in terms of how we could ultimately use our recycled water. Now, the next step below that would be to take the recycled water and store it in the ground. And the way we would do that is we would have certain locations within the city where we can inject it in the ground for future use. So, it would go into our bank account, so to speak, into how much we have in the San Fernando groundwater basin. And we would be able to pull that amount out later. That's different in that you kind of have the, the earth is a natural filter. It would take years for that water to eventually make it to the wells where we would pull that water out. We're studying that as well. The issue is, as I'm, I'm sure you know, I don't wanna make assumptions, but the groundwater basin is contaminated, based, you know, from the, contaminated from the operations of Lockheed in past years, when they produced their airplanes in World War II. So, it is a superfund site, and that site is being cleaned up. And underneath Burbank in Los Angeles, basically underneath the Lockheed site, there's what we call a plume, an area of contamination. And we're trying to take that water and reduce the mass, make it smaller, and also clean it up, treat it, so that we can remove this. We have to do studies to make sure where we inject the recycled water wouldn't push the plume in directions that we wouldn't want it to go. So, there's a lot of studies and analysis that has to be done to show the EPA that if we did something like that, we would not adversely affect our ability to, to contain this plume. We do sell recycled water. Well, actually, we trade recycled water with the City of Los Angeles for groundwater credits. It's about 50 acre feet a year. It's not a lot. But, we are working with the commu- Community Development Department. Right now, as a matter of fact, there's a pedestrian bridge that's going to go over the LA River. We wanna put a pipe on that so that we can take this recycled water and join up with LA. They have plans where they wanna do their own direct potable reuse project in the future as well. If we don't do it, others will. LA would love to have that water and, and put it through their, their direct potable reuse plant. So, we're looking ahead, and we wanna have that connection available so we can do that. And we would trade that for groundwater credits as well. As far as storage goes, that would be a huge tank that would have to be built here in Burbank to store, to store that water. It's about, uh, how many acre feet? It's like 12, 15? I wanna say, I think we're using about like 15 acre feet a week. That's a big tank.
You mean for, for?
For housing use?
For, for the recycled water, if we just wanted to, to store it and not put it in the, in the LA River?
Right, right.
Yeah, so.
But what, what about distributing it? Why?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get there. Yeah. So, when we have these developments come in, and they're predominantly located in certain areas, we wanna get as much of that recycled water there as possible. Absolutely. That's part of our planning. Now, why can't we distribute it to all the homes in our neighborhoods? That's a health issue. That's a, a serious issue, because then what you have is you have a house that is now dual-plumbed for potable water and recycled water. And per LA County, they're the ones that oversee the recycled water use regulations. Every location that uses recycled water has to have an onsite supervisor, a trained onsite supervisor. You also have to know what you can and can't do with the recycled water. You have to have a backflow preventer that has to be tested every year, and you, and it has to be maintained. So, this is something that you would put on the homeowner if, if you wanted to deliver water to, to a residence, for example.
But if you go to the park, you have recycled water, and then you go to the drinking fountain, and you're drinking clean water.
Yeah.
What would be the difference?
It's, it's maintained by the city. We, we have trained personnel to, to manage that, and they're trained, and they know what they're doing. We don't wanna rely on a homeowner.
Understood. I'm just thinking, why can't we connect the purple pipe to the sprinkler system?
Which sprinkler system is that?
The backyard, the front yard, the lawns?
It's part of the potable system. Then you run the risk of cross-contaminating the city's potable water system with the recycled system, because some guy decides to do it himself, or he hires a plumber, and they don't know what they're doing, and they connect the different systems. And now you've lost the integrity of the potable water system. The last thing we wanna do is get people sick because of cross-contamination issues. It's a big risk. And it has to be approved by the LA County Health for each site. Each homeowner would have to submit a permit to LA County Health for approval. Onsite supervisor, backflow preventers, annual testing, and maintenance. It's a big lift.
We, we better start doing something. We're running out of water. I mean, it's obvious that we're running out of water. So, I mean, I think we gotta start doing something, but I just, just, it seems to make sense if we have all this recycled water, and we're just throwing it in the ocean. So, but anyways, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor, if I can just add one thing, while Richard's up here, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the greenhouse gas reduction plan that was recently adopted by council has requirements in it that when new development comes online, as a purple pipe is readily available, they're required to connect for irrigation purposes. And I think if they have a water cooling systems.
Yeah.
They, they also are supposed to use it. So, to, to your point, new development has a higher bar to reach when it comes to how it's gonna use irrigation, water for irrigation, especially when it is in proximity to purple pipe.
And the, it's required by the city's rules and regulations. It's a, a requirement for service that they do that.
Okay.
And they don't have an onsite supervisor for those sites?
They, they do.
Uh, yeah, the large developments, it's a different animal, because they have onsite supervisors, they have onsite requirements, and they, they plum separately for both systems. So, clearly, the city has to go out and inspect it when it's all set up. And that assures that you keep those two separated, so there's not cross-contamination, to Richard's point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one more, and then I'll let you guys. I'm just curious, you know, since we started this whole ADU thing and lot splits three years ago, I, you remember, I had many concerns, and those concerns are now starting to materialize. What about, has anyone talked about residential justice? The justice for people that, that bought a single-family home, and now they got, you know, I've been seeing people, nine, 10 people living next door to them, seven cars, no place to park, parking wars, trash. Has there been any discussion about that with the state and, and, and the, because we talked about, I think we talked about quality, and one of your, your slides was quality of life, quality neighborhoods. And what we've done is we've destroyed, we're destroying, we have destroyed some neighborhoods, and we are continuing to destroy neighborhoods. So, I'm just wondering, now that the experiment has, has, has happened, are, are we giving any feedback? Are we, are we letting them know that this is not a great place or a great thing to do to our community?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Sorry. So, in the housing element, most of the projected housing growth will be accommodated within the opportunity sites that are located in the specific plan areas, which are away from the single-family residential neighborhoods. These are transit-oriented developments mostly, should be near transit stations, and which would benefit from having higher densities. We were mindful of selecting the opportunity sites for the projected growth to maintain the, the character of existing single-family neighborhood. Additionally, the programs within the housing element, there are few programs which focus on preserving and maintaining the existing single-family residential neighborhoods. Regarding ADUs and, and lot splits, these are, these are projects which the homeowner undertake, knowing that there's going to be additional unit in their backyard. And city has put in place objective standards on top of what state recommended to ensure that there are, there are building separation requirements, and also setback requirements which, which, you know, maintain privacy. So, to, to answer your question, all the projected housing that we are, you know, including the housing element based off of the RENA, would, would happen in the specific plan areas which are away from the single-family neighborhoods of the city.
I, I, I would agree with you, because I voted on many of those projects, that we've been smart in where we're developing and how we're developing. I would push back in that it's the homeowner that is building the ADUs. I think there are homeowners that are building ADUs, but most of it's investor-driven and creating duplexes for, for profit. And it's, you know, from what I've seen, it's, we're, we're starting to see the ramifications of that. We are starting to see parking wars, we are starting to see overcrowding. And me personally, I don't think it's healthy. I said this before COVID, not knowing what was to be, but I never thought it was healthy to have nine, 10, 12 people living on a lot. I just, it just, with trash and, and, and everything that goes on in, in a household waste, it just didn't seem healthy to have that many people living so close to each other. So, I, I've been reading, and I've been hearing from clients, you know, all of a sudden they got, you know, a thousand square foot ADU and a thousand square foot house, and now they got eight people living next door to them, and they're miserable. The quality of life, your peaceful enjoyment is gone. So, I'm just wondering if, if any of that is being reported back? Has the state asked, "Hey, how's it going"? Is there a questionnaire or anything given? Because it's, it's impacting our residents. And I just, I'm, I'm here to speak for those residents. I was here four years ago to speak up for the rights for people that bought a home for a million dollars and are paying $15,000 a year in taxes, that the carpet was pulled out from underneath them, and now they, they're, they're, they're living in a multi-residential neighborhood. When they purchased their home to be in the suburbs and on a single-family neighborhood. So, I'm just here to speak for them. And I just, again, when I ask these questions, I'm not directly asking you, I'm just asking if we as a city, are we addressing these things with the state? Are we giving them feedback? Do they understand what they're doing, or they don't care?
I, I think I can speak to that a little bit, just to answer the question of, are we communicating the concerns with new ADU regulations, which, by the way, there's additional new proposed changes to the ADU regs, and they just recently came out with new guidelines, which, which in and of itself are like, facilitate as much ADU development as possible. I will say, the council, and we do have a consultant that we use to advocate at the state level, they are communicating those concerns. I think the biggest one, and you, you're aware of this, was when they removed the owner occupancy.
Owner occupancy?
Yeah, owner occupancy was a big issue. As a matter of fact, we left it in our regs that if and when that expires, and I think it's, I think it's scheduled to expire unless extended. I think it was, was it 2026, and then extended? Then it was extended again, 20, yeah. So, so we, we, we understand your concerns. As a matter of fact, we found ourselves on calls with HCD staff, asking for clarity on certain development standards, because it's like, it's vague, it looks rushed, you know, some of these things. And then we're having to try to like, figure out how we, on one side, comply with the state requirement, but at the same time, we're hearing the same feedback from certain neighbors that it's like, "Hey, I don't really have control," or "I can't provide input that's gonna somehow facilitate a better design," right? And, and so that's the quandary. But, to, to the immediate point, yes, the council has communicated concerns. They have an advocacy group that actually goes up and talks to legislators regarding proposed changes to the ADU regs. But I think the biggest one that's still a sore point, and I've heard it numerous times from council members, is the removal of the owner occupancy really opened the floodgates for the type of development that you're referring to, where you've got people coming in and doing spec, spec build outs, as opposed to like, a homeowner bringing in a family member to live in those units. So, it, it is a concern. And right now, a lot of it, like you're seeing now, is a lot of the city trying to respond to state mandates, and trying to kind of thread the needle, preserve as much local control as we can, protect and preserve the neighborhoods. But at the same time, you know, the stick is on the other side to say, "Well, if you fail to produce the housing units, then you're under SB 35 requirements for certain things, and they're by right." And there's other triggers that, you know, the city kind of is, is having to, you know, kind of be proactive on, so that we don't fall into the same kind of conundrum of, like, the less we produce, the more they impose. And, and it just kinda keeps going that way. So, we, we hear you. We, we understand the concerns.
Uh, nothing else for me? Word members? Ms. Monaco, go ahead.
I just have a few questions. Who develops the RENA numbers?
Um, SCAG.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who develops those RENA numbers?
SCAG. But, but they, they are originated from the State Department of Finance.
All right. So, the State Department of Finance issues the numbers that we're supposed to work off of. So, the state is telling us that this is what the RENA numbers are, and that's why you have to do this.
Yes.
Clarification, okay. The second thing is, first of all, that was a fascinating presentation about the water. And I, honestly, I would like to know more about it, and I think more people in Burbank should find out about that, because I think that's an interesting way and an important way of addressing this problem. But, it doesn't sound like there is anything going on simultaneously with that. So, while you may have a great plan, and I, I think you're, you're coming up with a great plan, how does that match with the timing of the development that we're talking about? So, you might take 10 years to implement that, five years, I have no idea. But in the meantime, we're gonna incentivize all this development. Are we gonna be chasing ourselves?
Again, Richard Wilson, Assistant General Manager, Burbank.
I'm sorry, I really can't hear you. I'm talking.
I'm sorry. Unfortunately, I'm a low talker. I need to be, I need to talk louder. I apologize. Richard Wilson, Assistant General Manager, Water, Water Systems. The best-laid plans of mice and men often go awry. And the urban water management plan is a plan. And like I said, there are projects in the queue that are in design that could provide us with 460,000 acre feet of additional supplies, right? The timing, I'm told by MWD, is by 2030. The other projects that are in sequa, you know the sequa process. You know exactly when are these gonna be of You know exactly when are these going to be available, it's hard to say. So it's, 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 it's a difficult task to say that the timing will exactly match the timing that we need to meet here. It's the best information that we have now, based on all of the urban water management plans that all 26 member agencies have provided. We're pretty confident in what Burbank has provided. But again, Metropolitan Water District, they take all of the information that they get, and that's how they come up with demands. Now, our demands compared to the additional supply that, that, that these projects might yield is a, is a very, very small percentage. In fact, I'd be more than happy to come back and present the information that I've presented to council, which was in detail, and it, and it actually highlighted just how small the percentage is compared to the total supplies available. So whenever, whenever you want to welcome me back, I'll be more than happy to present some of the information that I've, I've presented to council before, and hopefully that will help, help answer some of your questions.
Again, you know, in my experience with these things, it's like when they widen a highway, soon as they're finished with it, it's obsolete. And, and again, my concern is, okay, you have your, you're implementing your plan, but the housing is outstripping that. Which brings me, I guess, to my next point, which is, um, these, and I'm sorry, I'm finished with the water.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Are we talking about coming up with incentives and providing the state with a plan? Or are we actually, and incentivizing developers to come in and build this housing? This is not the city of Burbank building houses, right, building affordable houses?
So i- in the housing element, there's a reference to one of the programs where we talk about public-private partnerships.
Right.
So there are, are different scenarios. There is the market side of it, where we want to be very clear on what the city's vision and objective standards are.
Right.
And then facilitate, you know, private development doing its thing and building development, including the number of affordable units through our inclusionary and density bonus programs. And then there's other things like the Civic Center project that you maybe have heard of recently, where there's a potential development on a city lot. And that city lot, it's, it's a negotiated thing, where you have both a private developer and the city. The city can negotiate certain requirements, community benefits, that could include housing and affor- high levels of affordable housing. So that's another example. So there's, and then we can also work with some of our other nonprofits, where they're looking at acquiring units, rehabbing them, and then locking them in as affordable, deed-restricted units. So I guess what I would say is, it's multifaceted, it's, it's beyond the bounds of just saying, is this a city-led effort in the sense of housing production? It's the opposite. It's, the reality of it is the private sector would be the one building the units. We would be requiring a certain number to be deed-restricted and maintained affordable, depending on whether it's for sale or rental. And then in other areas where there's a higher gap to maintain the high levels of affordability for very low-income households, there's probably the possibility of working with them to secure certain funding. You know, sometimes it's tax credits, sometimes it's home funds, and kind of mixing all that together to help build very heavily burdened gaps for, for the very, you know, very low and low-income units. So it, it's multifaceted, and that's why, you know, it took us 40 minutes to go through 27 programs, is because it is as complicated and as broad and vast kind of tentacles that you have to go through to look at all the different options to get housing built. It's not an easy process, as you're all seeing, yeah.
I'm somewhat familiar with it, but I'm also finding out now that these counties are running out of money, that they don't have the resources anymore to hand out tax credits, that they're pulling back a lot. So I understand, and I just want to clarify that what we're doing is incentivizing. We're coming back to the state with a plan, right? This is not saying we're doing this. This is, okay, if somebody comes in, this is what they must do.
It's to facilit- it's to facilitate or create
Okay.
A structure, a regulatory structure, that would accommodate people from, to come in and build out housing and provide a certain level of affordability. And that, and the reason that's important is that the state, this round of housing element has put a lot more requirements on cities to prove up how they're going to be able to facilitate housing, including, you saw how extensive the narrative was on the opportunity sites. It was like basically, give, almost give me a letter from the developer that guarantees that they're going to build housing.
I'm just, there are limits to growth, unfortunately. And I think those have to be addressed in, as you say, a myriad number of ways. And while it's absolutely important for housing and for people who can't afford housing in the immediate area to get housing, there are limits to development. And I think those have to be addressed. Everything from water to resources to transportation, I, I, I'm not sure that the state understands what the limitations are here in this city and our immediate environment. And I know, I, I'm very frustrated about it, but I, I think that we need to address those, the question of limited, of limits to development. Got into trouble with the water, and I think it's going to get us into more trouble, especially since water levels continue to drop. My understanding is that we're not going to have electricity, because the water's not going to meet the generators or the turbines or whatever it is. So I'm, I'm just putting that out there, and I'm saying, look, I'm, I'm concerned about limits of growth. And comment, that's it.
The only thing that I have a question about is, what's up with the carpenter, carpenters union calling in? And what are we doing for them? And
So during public comment, you heard the carpet, Southwest Regional Carpenters Union submit public comments. They're, they're allowed to, like any other stakeholder, to provide comments. They have expressed through the letters that you've received an interest to try to facilitate living wages for workers that are building these types of developments. And they want the city to look at that through this process.
And is there anything we're doing for them?
There is, well, at least I would say we are. They may disagree, but in the two programs under density bonus and also in inclusionary housing, we added language in there that says that we would undertake an economic feasibility analysis to look at what it would actually cost to incorporate prevailing wage and workforce training type of requirements on housing projects. Some cities have done that, and what we want to do is go through and, and conduct that level of analysis to look at what best practices have been put in place in other cities, and how effective they've been to facilitate housing. Because the overall goal is to facilitate housing. All these other things are, are, are great, and they're commendable if we can, you know, kind of add them as community benefits. But we have to be mindful that the state is looking at us and saying, if, if these things that you're doing are going to chill or become a constraint to housing development, then we, we need to be careful with that, because then that could potentially create a situation with whether or not our housing element is certified. So what we're doing is saying, hey, let's conduct the analysis, let's look at it, and then bring that back to council, for them to look at it and weigh it with other community benefits. But to say, hey, let's incorporate it now without the benefit, and you are all very savvy, without the data and the analysis, because we, we have to look at it from the standpoint of when we do inclusionary housing, we have updated development impact fees, we have other fees that are charged on the developer to produce the units. And then if we now add prevailing wage, which does cost more money to pay for that, we have to weigh all that, and does it still, is it still financially feasible to produce housing? So we need to know what those thresholds are. And we want to make sure that the council is informed of that, if they were to undertake that as future policy. So part of it is acknowledging, yes, we understand people should be paid a living wage, but what we need to do is balance it with the goal in the housing element, which is to produce housing for all economic segments, and see how we can do that. Because ultimately, zero times nothing, right, is, is nothing. So if, if, if we, if we make it financially and feasible to build the housing, then we're not going to get units, and then we're, now we're on the hook with RENA again. And once again, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy of if we can't produce the units, we're not complying with state law. So we, we, we're going to look at that, we're going to recommend council, and that's what's in front of you, recommend to council that they look at that as well. And then have a vetting process, actually go out and do community meetings and stakeholder meetings, and then bring that back to council with a report.
Yeah. And just one more thing, thank you for that. Has anybody been to Delmar Station in Pasadena, where they built those apartment complexes at the train station?
Yes.
And I noticed we have a lot of land by, you know, the railroad tracks, and I was wondering if we were implementing some sort of project to build so- something like that?
That would be within the options of what could be built. And the plan that would facilitate that would be the specific plans, because most of the housing, as you saw in those exhibits, are in the immediate vicinity of our major transit, metro link and, and metro transit stops. So what you see there at the Delmar Station is actually what they call a transit-oriented development project. We would be, we would be encouraging, and the state actually encourages those, to actually build that type of housing in proximity to the station. And, and you would be seeing that through the specific plans. You have the downtown specific plan, Golden State specific plan, and then we're even looking at the media district specific plan update within a year.
And do tracks also go through the media district?
There's other forms of transit, not just rail. So there's a mobility center near where Tularia is at that needs to be built out, and part of that is bus connections, and high-frequency bus connections in that area. So both rail, as well as wheel, and then other forms, right, ped and bike. But those transit-oriented projects near employment centers are going to be a key component.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. The planning board will now deliberate what is the planning board's pleasure. Motion? No motion? Something? More deliberation?
12,000 units is a lot.
So why doesn't somebody make the motion and see if we have any consensus? And whatever that mo- whatever that vote is, will go to council for their decision.
Vice Chair, if I could just jump in, I just want to remind the board that any recommendation to council on this item would need three votes, whether that's adopting staff's recommendation, a modified version of it, or denying the recommendation, it would need, it would need
Because of the amount of people.
Exactly.
But if it was declined, it would go to council as a declination, right?
Yes.
And then they would have to overturn it.
Yes.
So be it.
It would go to the council either way.
Yeah.
Just formally as a recommendation, it would need three votes.
But they, but council would also, well, let's see, yeah, okay.
If Vice, Vice Chair, if I can just, maybe just throw this out there real quick. I just want to make sure you're aware, we, we understand that there's a lot of things with the state that, you know, that do go against local control. But I just want to be clear, what's in front of you is effectively, after three rounds with the state, is a housing element that includes policies and programs that ensure that we have a compliant housing element with the state. Is it perfect? It's not perfect. Is it enough to get us to the approval while still ensuring that the council has the ability to look at and influence the policies and programs as they're developed? Yes, there's enough there for that. So I just want to make sure, when, when you kind of look at it, it's not really an all or nothing. Really, the reality of it is, from, from a, from a planning board's standpoint, the question to the planning board is, is in front of you in compliance with state law? Is in front of you provide enough information for you to understand what the policies and programs mean going forward, and how those work with both the requirements under the city's code, as well as the requirements under the general plan? And, and I think that, I just want to bring that back to center, because ultimately, beyond that, there's a larger policy decision that the council has to deal with, and that goes well beyond the bounds of the board. So I, I really do think I want to remind the board that really what you're looking at is looking at it from a technical standpoint. Does it comply with the requirements? Is it consistent with the city's general plan? And is it consistent with all the different elements? And we think that the resolution that's in front of you, as imperfect as it may be, does show that what's, what's been culminated over two years with a public input, and what's in front of you is consistent with the general plan and warrants a recommendation to the council, at least for consideration. And then they can kick the tires and look at all the different policy issues that you've all brought up, because that's basically what their task to do.
And just to clarify, if we I'm sorry, just to clarify, if we don't agree, it still goes to the
Still goes to council. And, and they can overturn it, and they can listen, hopefully, to our comments, if, if you're going to provide our comments?
Yeah, and, and not to be legal of the point, but I would say, you could provide all your comments and still make a recommendation that they approve the housing element, inclusive of all the concerns that you've already noted.
What is the pleasure, boys, gentlemen? You're not making a motion? Okay?
I'd like to make a motion to, I guess, pass the staff's recommendation, but let city council know, you know, everything that we discussed, basically.
This is what you're going to say?
Okay.
But you're also going to augment it with what you just said?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of Exhibit A of the planning board of the city of Burbank, recommending the city council adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Burbank approving the 2021 through 2029 six-cycle housing element, safety element, and environmental justice general plan updates. But that they also take into consideration everything that we discussed in this meeting with water and everything else, all our concerns.
Mr. Ramirez, will you repeat what you said about? Go ahead and repeat what you said about us complying and
Sorry. So what, what I, what I was mentioning earlier was, the board is tasked with looking at a recommendation as it relates to the housing element update, the safety element update, and the environmental justice updates to the general plan as required by state law. The board is tasked as basically the land use body to evaluate the project to ensure its consistency with the general plan, to its consistency with state law. And included in the general plan are policies, programs, and goals that have already been adopted by the city and the council. And the resolution in front of you is a recommendation to acknowledge that the project as presented, as imperfect as it might be, of the fact that we have some concerns with what the state is mandating of us. But the actual document in front of you and the policies and programs included therein are consistent with the city's regulations, the city's general plan. And for that reason, could be recommended to the council. However, incorporate within that a clear understanding that the board has concerns with the state-mandated requirements because of the concerns with its impacts to resources, both now and in the future. And the concern from the board is that you want to acknowledge that those things need to be vetted, and we need to voice those concerns to the state through this process, and be mindful that we need to be proactive to make certain improvements to support that growth if we're going to facilitate it. And I would leave it at that.
Elegantly said. I don't agree, I don't agree with a lot of what the state has mandated. I want that to be voiced. I understand what you're tasked with. I understand that we have met and complied with what the state has asked, and we've done the best we could to document it. So, I will second that motion with the caveat that all of our comments to council, all of our comments are sent to council and let them hash that out with a very much a displeasure of where we're headed through our legislative process with the state. So, we have a first. We have a second. Why don't you go ahead and poll the board?
Mr. Monaco?
No.
Mr. Elrich?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
So...
So, I just want to point out, though, so for this resolution to pass, a recommendation to pass, all three members would have to vote yes. So, at this stage, with the two-to-one vote, the resolution does not pass.
Do you want to reconsider?
I think a stronger message has got to be sent to the council. I don't... I'm not comfortable. I understand that what we're being asked to do is approve... You're recommending to us to approve the plan that agrees with the state, that if we don't approve that plan, the state will come in and start putting pressure on us to approve that plan, at least on the council level. Am I correct?
I would clarify that the consequences of not having a state-compliant housing element are the things that Mr. Jesh had noted, and that is that certain things can now become by right, further eroding local control. And at the worst-case scenario, the state attorney general can step in and preclude us from issuing building permits, including those for studio projects and others. So, it would create more constraints. So, I would say, to Mr. Rosati's point, if the strong point to be made is to communicate the concerns with the fact that there's erosion of the local control, I would suggest that a recommendation to move the motion forward, but documenting and being very clear on the major concerns that the board has probably hold more weight, because it allows at least the council to consider a recommendation that's on record through the resolution while still voicing your concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Just mechanically speaking, if we're going to, you know, do a re-vote on that motion, we needed to reconsider, which we need to start with you, Board Member Monaco.
Motion to reconsider?
Yes.
And then we'd need a second from either of you two.
I second.
Second. Go ahead and poll us.
Board Member Elrich?
Yes.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes. So, that is on the reconsider. Now, on the motion, or no?
No, that would pass.
That's everything.
Well, technically, yes, but, I mean, formally, I understand what's going on. It's clear on the record.
It's clear on the record. So, why don't we just... Let's just tie the loose ends, and we could redo the motion.
All right. So, you wanted to read the motion again?
So, the motion would be what was...
Board Member Elrich, you could just make the motion to say, restate it as you previously noted on record. That is clear enough for the record. You don't need to say word for word.
Motion to restate what I previously said on record.
Second.
Board Member Elrich?
Yes.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
So, Mr. Monaco, I just want to say that I think our council is somewhat aware, only because... I'm going to say aware, because of their pushback on the Pickwick project and them spending a million bucks on attorney fees. So, I think they're aware. So, hopefully our... Hopefully, our meeting is well-received. Okay.
Thank you.
So, now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, 818-238-3335 to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in the queue until all person... All in-person comments are received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. For callers, please remember to lower your volume on your TV or your computer, and take your phone off speaker to deliver your comment. Do we have any callers?
Not currently, but we will wait the two minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Sherpa.
Thank you.
At the end. There are no callers in the queue.
There be no further public comment. I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Any reports?
I have no reports. Thank you.
Now is the time for approval of the minutes from May 9, 2022, planning board meeting. Any... Are there any questions or comments, or do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Board Member Elrich?
Yes.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on future agenda. Do any board members have anything they want to introduce?
Is there an agenda, like anything that we already have on the agenda for the future?
The forecast is in your file.
I see those, yeah.
So, no, there's actually a lot more, but these all have to be noticed before we bring them forth to you. So, there's a handful of upcoming items. We'll populate the agenda forecast with more information. Just touching back real quick, I don't know if... It sounds like you're interested in it. I talked to Mr. Wilson outside, and what I can do in coming meetings is have him give you the presentation that he gave to council, because I think it'd be informative. It's good moving forward to have that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
Pretty much gave us the presentation, but...
He did, but it might be an updated version, considering where we are.
All right.
Yeah.
Now is the time for city planner comments. Any comments from the city planner?
I just want to take the moment to thank you guys. This was a pretty big thing to have to deal with, both public comment and then consideration of this. So, I really understand how it weighs on you all. I really respect you as residents of the city, and everything you said was on point collectively as a group. It does not go unnoticed. It's going to be incorporated into the information that we convey to the council. So, I want to commend you, because these are the times where the board members really earn their pay, if you want to call it that, from the standpoint of saying, some of these things that you deal with, it's this adage of, "We can strive for perfection, but sometimes we have to go with good." And in doing that, sometimes you're making decisions as board members that personally, you might kind of be like, "Well, begrudgingly, I'm making a decision that has a larger implication to kind of facilitate either development to occur or for council to have all that information and vetting." So, I think I wanted to say that to you, is that the decision that you made tonight and just the discussion is very helpful. It's informative to the community, because they also understand that you're not rubber-stamping things. You're really vetting these things through and looking at them with all the different perspectives and skills that you bring, with your expertise, both in what you work and just your personal experience in the community. And so, I just wanted to commend you all for the work that you did tonight, and then just kind of setting that high standard. We're... Hopefully, we'll have... Board Member Articani was unable to come tonight, but hopefully, we'll also have a newborn member in the coming months, and they can be part of this very cohesive group of individuals. So, I would just wanted to personally commend you and thank you for your service and for the decisions that you make, as tough as they are to make sometimes. I'll let Sherpa know. She almost ran out of steam there at the end, but she did a great job.
We will now adjourn to the next regular planning board meeting on Monday, September 12, 2022. The meeting will be held in person in the city chambers here at 275 East Olive Avenue. The public is invited to attend in person or review the meeting online or on TV. The public will be able to provide public comment in the following ways: in person, at the appropriate time of the meeting, by leaving an e-comment on the webpage at burbancca.gov/ecomments, or by calling directly to 818-238-3335. Thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight.
Thank you.